2B, approval of our January 15th Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes. Does anyone like to make a motion? Motion to approve.
Second half.
Motion by Carly, second by Adam, to approve our January 15th Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 2C, approval of our January 22nd Board Special and Executive Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, oh, I'm talking again.
I'll second.
Motion by Carly and seconded by Jim, all those in favor of approving our January 22nd Meeting Minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approval of our January 29th Board of Education Meeting Minutes with the Village and Chamber. Motion to approve. Motion by Carly, seconded by Joel, all those in favor of approving our January 29th Board of Education Meeting with the Village and the Chamber, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And finally, 2B, approval of our January 31st Board Workshop Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Jim, all those in favor of approving our January 31st Board Workshop Meeting Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty, number three, addressing the board, our students' public. Nicole, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so I would like to introduce you all to Leo Beer. He is our, he's in the afternoon program at Little Vikings. This is Tara DeGlo, she's his teacher, Teacher Tara. And this is Amber, she's also representing Little Vikings. So, a little bit about Leo. He was nominated by Teacher Tara, and here's some things she said about him. He's an amazing friend. He's a great problem solver, and he often looks for win-win situations for everybody involved. He goes above and beyond, he's a hard worker, very helpful to peers and adults. He has a great attitude, very well-mannered. He's extremely caring and considerate of everyone, and he's super friendly. Did I get it all, Leo?
Awesome.
Yes.
Congratulations, Leo.
Congratulations, Leo.
Leo, do you want to tell who's here with you? Is your family with you? Is that your mom?
Yes.
Your dad? Do you have two brothers?
Yes.
Thank you so much. It's always, this is one of the most exciting parts of the board meeting when we get to recognize special students. So, we have a little certificate for you, and you get a really special Vikings pin. And is it okay if we go take your picture up in the hallway?
With your family and your teachers.
Who's the 4K?
Who's our 4K?
I don't know.
We don't have you right now?
Okay. We must have.
Alright, so we'll go in the hallway and take everyone's pictures quickly.
It won't, it won't, it's gonna just randomly come in about 10 minutes, and I'll jump 8 feet.
Alrighty, moving on, school news. Ethan, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I got a bunch of things for us tonight. So first of all, I have my boys' basketballs versus Sauk Prairie on Tuesday, and it's at Edgewood Friday, and at Watertown on Saturday. Girls' basketball is playing at Barnaville on Tuesday, at McFarland Thursday, and at Portage on Saturday. Gymnastics is a meet at Biriboo. Our boys' swimming team is a sectional at Watertown. The high school is hosting their Super Bowl Pancake Breakfast on Sunday. With performances from the high school and middle school fiddle bands. The high school winter formal is on Saturday, February 17th. And as well as, the high school Tuesday Jazz Band is going to attend the Sun Prairie Jazz Fest on Sunday. And then last, I have that our juniors just started their ECT prep classes. And I want to thank all the teachers that are a part of that, and how much work they put in overtime to help out our students for those classes.
Awesome, thank you, Ethan. Brian, do you have anything to share?
I have a few more things. This is National School Counselor Week, and so are school counselors. Brooke, Buddy, Chrisanne, Satish, and Carrie, all doing an incredible job throughout our whole district, kind of preparing social-emotional lessons, helping with curricular schedules and classes, and kind of doing everything in between. So, we appreciate all of their hard work and dedication to the kids and staff here at Monworth. Also, just want to remind you that the art show is happening at the Historium. It's pretty incredible, and you know, we went and toured it a couple weeks ago, and just the gamut of art is just incredible. So, we have some really talented students. Also acknowledge that it is Career and Tech Ed Month, so every week is kind of a different week in thanks to something with career ed, so it's Business Related or Skills USA Week as well. It is also, 4K registration is now open, and if you want a preferred, you know, preferred site, you have to get your 4K registration in by March 1st. And I think that's all I have.
Awesome, board members, do you have anything?
The PTO is hosting two-minute tirol. It'll be Friday, February 23rd, starting at 4:00. You get in for $22 instead of the $25, but you have to go to our Facebook page and click the link and sign up that way to get the discount tickets.
Awesome.
I got, I had a chance to visit a little bit of the classrooms in middle school last week early, and just kind of catch up on how things are going at the middle school. Short discussion, we talked a little bit about facilities, which those needs haven't really changed since we last talked, and turned the power of making do with, you know, sending kids over here for classes, and using closet space for certain functions. But otherwise, the second semester's off to a good start. They're still adjusting to how they're down a section in their grades. And he talked a little bit about the beginnings, which Sarah just referenced as well, in the Education Committee about beginning to look at that curriculum. That's on their radar. So, he, I am, they are doing, I think the 12th, February 12th is the next half day, and they'll be doing some grade awards that day, so we'll try and take a look at that. And they have their Applied Arts Night coming up on February 20th.
Yeah, well, for one, I know that it's been a little while since Taste of Jazz was a huge hit again. It's one of those things that if you haven't been to it, and you should go to it, it's worth checking out, it's a great entertainment. Our very own Ethan Fundrick magically appeared on like game stages. Awesome job, Ethan. And last week, last week was that last week already, we were at Student Council.
Yes.
We admit everything else that was going on. We showed up at Student Council, it's Carly and Jess and I at the high school, to get a flavor of what they're working on right now. And just, you know, just like, it's fun to see the progression. You're so impressed with the middle school kids in terms of some of the input. And at the high school, the, just the independence, you know, of each of them at the tables, and really, really coming in there with a purpose and problem solving, and talking to each other. It was fun to watch, so a lot of good work being done there.
Does anybody else have anything?
I would just chime in again, a second, the recommendation to go see the art in the Historium at the art show. I got to do that last weekend, I think, and it's like, as board members, I get to pick one, it was like, it was super hard. I literally took pictures of like six or seven, and was like, I don't know.
I did the same thing. I went yesterday, walked through, and I took like four pictures. Oh, I'm gonna just get one of my daughters. I was like, alright, I gotta pick one. Help me air it down.
But some of them are first they know too. I saw like some photographs that, back and put my name on it, so I don't recommend.
Alrighty, 3C, citizens' comments.
I'll take the second.
Number four, personnel transactions. Is there anything that we should note?
No, there's none.
Nope. Someone like to make a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Motion by Leo, seconded by Joel, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull up to discuss?
I had one question on the financial reports.
Fantastic.
I figured. My only question was on the WRS, is that, is that the monthly number, or is that the quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly. Okay. So how does that relate to when we look at that payroll number? Because when I do the calculation, the percentages don't add up. I'm assuming that includes them, that must be including everybody else as opposed to the payroll return?
The payroll is that, that payroll for the naffed girls.
Thank you. Okay.
Good question.
Appreciate it. So I'll make sure I didn't rush to that.
Does anyone have any other questions? Or would someone like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second half.
Motion by Leo, seconded by Adam, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items, committee member reports. Brad is not here to join us for the building grounds and transportation.
I can fill in on Jessica.
I was gonna ask, but I didn't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's totally fine. So, buildings and grounds, we met on January 22nd, and with Dave's report, he was pleased to report that he is currently fully staffed. And we met on 22nd, obviously the snow and cold was front and center on both his mind and Brian's, but so the staff was working extremely hard through those weeks, so greatly appreciated. And Dave's group is just continuing to work on some, some projects, and through work request, safety request at the ICE has been completed. Plans to get safety funds in all four buildings, and the high school football scoreboard, working with contractors very soon. With Brian's report, I just want to point out that next week is School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, February 12th through the 16th. There are a few stats here that I'll, I'll report here, so in Wisconsin, there are more than 12,000 school bus drivers who safely transport more than 400,000 students from school each day. They travel an average of 144 million miles a year. So, next week is just a great appreciation, and thank everybody over in the Transportation Office for all that work. So, that is our BGT report. Our next meeting is on February 26th at 4:30.
Awesome, do you want to continue on a couple things?
Alright, on a roll. So, finance, we met on January 8th, and apologize in advance, I'm gonna mess up these names, but we, we accepted two very generous donations. A scholarship donation for $65,000 from the Schrattford family, Joan and Raleigh, for the creation of the Raleigh-Schrattford Memorial Scholarship. So, outstanding, very generous gift there. And then also another very generous donation for $3,000 from Julie Marshouse and Glenn Bauer to support students in need for summer camps. So, we really appreciate those donations. We discussed the calendar, the January 12th, the seventh Friday count, just how that impacts our revenue. And with all the audit reports, just all the good work that everybody, Scott and everybody in the office does to make sure that that runs smooth. So, our next meeting there is February 8th, February 12th, so next Monday.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions, Virginia? Okay, Adam, do you want to talk about safety in this?
Yeah, absolutely. We had a nice visit from Kim Hoover of Oregon Mental Health, trying to talk about their program, all the services they provide for Monworth students, talk through all the numbers, you know, that they're seeing right now through both their counselors. And steps that they've taken into alignment and understand between Adam and teachers, parents, and counselors in terms of expectations, so they can make sure that people know what they're getting into going in, and, and the expectations on them to participate in it, so that everyone's time is used valuably. So, it's just great, it was great to hear a little bit more and get acquainted with her, because this program's been really valuable for the district. You heard about the 5-year people non-discrimination report? Big undertaking by, you know, led by Brian to sift through a lot of our annual reports over that time period. And catalog instances that just involve people of all types, and make sure that we're treating everyone equally. Does a lot of the great work of reviewing info with the building principals, deans, make sure you're accurate, identify any patterns that we have. We did put out a community survey to try to gather interest and input on that, and I've heard that we've got some public participation, more, more quality than quantity, which is okay. But that's, that's important too. This all feeds into a March 6th public forum that we're gonna have, and as discussed, to jazz it up a little bit instead of just reading out a report. Plans still in place for the multicultural potluck and social. And here a presentation from staff who are big proponents of, and provide a lot of assistance in belonging, the whole concept of belonging. So it'll be a fun night, and a lot of things involved, so mark your calendars. And then looking ahead, the Wired DS results, we're gonna be reviewing those at our next meeting, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it's correct, right, in terms of the acronym. So Brian sent a packet for us, and we'll be reviewing it at the next meeting. Lots of, lots to go through there too, to see where our kids are at in terms of some of their, their behaviors, and what we can think about as a, as a team to try to help them out.
Awesome. Anyone have any questions, Brad? Do you want to continue on? Do you have anything to talk about, do you have the Recreation and Forest Re-Commission?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's been, that's been a fun thing to be on. It's, you know, especially at the heels, or this was ahead of, but all the cooperation we've had with the village and the schools and the chamber, and thinking about how to solution around problems. The village, one thing that was hot right now is putting in a shelter over by the pickleball courts, given that there's gonna be a lot of action here, and there's usually a lot of hot days, both for staying out of the sun and for rain if it, if it comes out. So it'd be a nice addition, the village is finding money in their budget for that, and they've explored a lot of different options. Make sure that they're fitting the property right. Dave Reach showed up and had a good discussion about it. They explored solar, that was one of the first attempts, just because, trying to be, trying to be thoughtful about the investment, it doesn't really make sense. It's not as functional there, it's too small of a surface area, a little bit too far removed from the grid, but just kicked around, and Dave was sat there and said, well, if we're over here, it would work. There, it's not gonna work. And just getting everyone familiar with some of the lay of the land there was, it was neat to see. So, Dave's taking that back actually to finance at the next meeting, the initial plans. And really, it's more just to run through us, are we okay with having it there? The, the cost is, the village is gonna be taking the brunt of this, so we're in good shape to be able to improve the facilities through our cooperation. And I have one, this is an open-ended question on that, but it did come up in conversation. Do we have temporary rest for facilities anywhere in that park during the heavy use periods of the year? I don't think we do, right? I mean, that's something that is worth thinking about, as if you're talking about pickleballers being out there for a long time, and I thought through like, you know, softball games and everything for spectators and for players. I'm not sure what is done right now in terms of if their school buildings are accessible, or where people go, if they need to go. Yeah. There is one over there.
A softball field.
Okay, okay.
The car field.
Got it.
Close to three car lanes.
Right, right. So, something I'll bring up at the next meeting.
Any questions, Brad? Okay, thank you, Adam. 6B, our shared reflections from the State Education Convention.
I can just start by saying how incredibly thankful I am that we all attended. I mean, it was, it's such a good opportunity for us to learn together, to have opportunities to discuss, and I thought it was really fantastic. I don't know if you all just, just go around the room and share our highlights, or, I don't know. Suggestions?
Sure.
Okay. I hope we start.
Sure.
Okay.
We, there are so many things to think about there. I made a list, and I'll try to roll through it quickly. The big one for me was a program that I went to that was run by the Pewwakis District. It was about, it was kind of fresh off our conversations around background knowledge, and how important that is to learning, and especially in the reading side. But they have a really innovative early learning approach. It's at their 4K, it's a district-run 4K facility. They want to translate it to kindergarten, and I talked to them afterward, they said it absolutely translates to kindergarten, but it's, it's really more of like an experiential learning. Themed classrooms that they have, there's 12 themes, there's six rooms that have a different theme for each semester. They rotate kids around, kids and teachers through these classrooms three weeks at a time. Whatever model you use, the key about it was, you know, you go to the dinosaur room, and they have like different areas where you can dig for fossils, but all the lessons that they have are all numeracy and literacy type, so you're looking for, you know, the fossil with A on it, or whatever it might be. But they've done a lot of really creative work in terms of making it interesting. And it really resonated with me, as, especially as we're thinking about what our kindergarten looks like, and thinking about having a really appealing experience for parents coming in. It's something that I'd love to pass along to, you know, to Sarah and to others, just to take a look at, and see if that's something, whether in that form or a different form, that might inspire us as we're thinking at how we can make that a really cool experience for kids.
Do you have others to share, or?
I got, I got a lot of others. You know, let me just see if there's anything else in there. I'll give, I'll give it one more thought, and I don't know how we want to distribute these, I don't want to talk through all of these, it's more better for conversation. But yeah, I think we were all pretty impressed with Sean Coby's keynote address, just how, how chill but impactful that guy was. And as we were talking last week about our strategic planning, and our thought process, and where we want this school to be, and as we're talking through our strategic plan, his whole comment about goal-setting, and to be, you know, audacious a little bit in that, about his comment about we had no business being on the moon in 1969. And obviously want to, we're in a situation where, you know, there's constraints on public education and what you can do, but it's to locate and dream big, and set some, maybe set a target out there for ourselves. Maybe less than the moon, but shooting, pretty close to that. So, I, that's, that resonated with me, of just like when we're getting to May, to not just think about the organization, and, you know, where we're headed even in the next year, but to think about what our North Star might be that we're working toward, and then figure out the path to get there.
Awesome. Awesome.
I've got a list. So, I went to, the first session I went to was about, was put on by the Waterford and Point School Districts, and just about district communication. And it was really awesome to see, because a lot of the things that they talked about are things that we're doing now, especially with the help of offering, but they had a lot of like really good lessons learned and goals. Some of them being that the, one of the things that they were trying to do was specifically increase revenue with open enrollment, you know, encouraging open enrollment, grants, referenda, things that we've looked at, and also award applications, bringing in recognition for, for staff and educators, through things like the Herbful Teacher of the Year Award, things like that. So a lot of good, a lot of good materials, and one of their watch points was don't try to do everything. It's really easy for like everything, like I should say, to get thrown at Communications, but, but just, you know, manage your, manage your scope. We were, Jessica and I worked, we worked together on Amplifying Student Voice, excuse me, Student Voice with the Stevens Point School District, who had done a, you might have to remind me the format, but the students, it was a student panel that we saw, and I believe that they had done the student panel for their education staff, for their teachers as well. And the panel was focused on topics around what, asking students questions around what made them feel included, what made them feel a sense of belonging. And so it was really good to hear that right from, right from the students' mouth. And the thing that, as I was looking through my notes that I had highlighted, was how can we engage students in, in our own professional development for our staff as well, and the DEI topics. I went to one that, the next one I went to also had kind of a communications bent, but it was, the, the title was Blueprint for Improving Facilities in Half the Time, and it really was just kind of focused on the Yorkville Joint School District, and how they got through a comprehensive facility plan, priced out, figured out the budget, and then figured out how to start going to refer for that. So a lot of really good supporting materials. One of the things that they did in order to survey the community and really get feedback was they actually did like phone surveys with, 10-minute phone surveys with community members. And he said, you might think that that's, people aren't gonna answer the phone, that's too much, but we got really good engagement and really good feedback through that. So, just thinking outside the box in terms of how we, how we get that. His lesson learned was like, take the show on the road, the community's not gonna come to you. You've got to be out and present, and in those areas where community members are, to get them engaged. They, he also had a lot of, a lot of really cool materials, did like regular newsletters, a lot of very direct communication about finances, referenda, taxes, all of that stuff, just, and then in each newsletter had links to previous topics that people could easily reference back. So, lots of good lessons learned in that one. Let's see, what else is important? I also have a long list of notes, but I don't want to just throw it on. I went to one, I think the one highlight I will talk about on, I went to one on that was comparing how the state funds public schools versus voucher schools. Very detailed, very interesting. The big takeaway in, that I highlighted in there, and I think we all know this, is just the discrepancy in special education funding. The vouchers get that full amount reimbursed, whereas we only get about a third reimbursed. And that kind of previews some, we're gonna be talking about that at the next Community Legislative Committee. I know that's a big area of the state, state budget right now, is another push to get special education funding increased. I also, in like the aspirational kind of vein, I went to one that was done by the school district in Superior. They actually have a forest, they have a school forest, and it was all about their outdoor education. And they are able to take kids out all through, through all the grades for different age-appropriate lessons, whether it's, you know, their youngest learners out for short periods of time, or their older learners out for, for all day. And it just, it was really neat to get to hear how, I, I think, hearing you talk about the experiential learning in pre-K, like I think the more of those experiential kinds of things that we can find and bring and offer to our students is helpful, because just not everybody learns best by sitting at a desk, and the more things like that that we can find, I think is a service to all of our, all of our kids. I went to a Wasbee Legislative Update, which like I started to read it, and then I also saw today that the Senate just passed a bunch of bills today, and there's a hearing tomorrow, and so like, everything in here is all changed, so I'm not gonna go. There's a, we're at the end of the two-year session, so they're, they're trying to get a lot of stuff in, and they're just throwing stuff at the wall right now to, I don't mean to make that sound unprofessional, but I think that like, they're, the Assembly and the Senate at this time tend to just propose a lot of stuff that they can run on, and that they a lot of stuff that they can run on and that they don't, doesn't necessarily have a chance of actually passing through the, through the full process until the governor's desk. And yeah, that's, those are some of my highlights. Thank you, Greg. Jessica, you want to share something?
Yes. I know it's a, it's a big ask for all of us to leave everything behind for three days, but there are some outstanding breakouts and phenomenal speakers, but I think hands down the best part is just the chance for us to collaborate and just, just have conversations away from a formal agenda. I think it's time very well spent. The breakouts that I did attend, I attended some finance breakouts. Just some, some stats with this, we're not alone here. In 2022, with the operating referendum is the largest number of operating referendums since 1998. Eighty-two percent of school districts have called for referendum since limitations were set in place. This one I found interesting. School property tax as a percentage of personal income is at an all-time low. And CPIU is projected about 4.12%. Another, Nicolay High School put on a very well breakout regarding their capital referendum. And then lastly, which we've talked a lot about, Joel, Lee and I attended a breakout regarding celebrating educator excellence. So a lot of good stuff from that, that we have already taken some of these concepts and started to implement them. So a lot of great stuff, but again, hands down, the best part is just spending time together and collaborating together.
Great. This, I think this is the biggest group of school or numbers we've taken. I think five was the max before this, so it was awesome that all of us could go. So I'm not going to piggyback on anything anybody said. One of the ones that I went to, and I know you guys all heard me talk about it while we were there, but I was very excited, this lady was awesome, her name was Mary, I'm not going to try her last name, there's a lot of vowels in it. But she does student-centered school safety through improv. So yes, she made us improv, we had to be an ego and a bear. And there were people in there who weren't going to do it, and I did all of it. I don't care. It was, it was awesome. She teaches like the Navy SEALs and basically if you don't practice, you won't know what to do in a situation, just like we practice fire drills and all of that stuff. But she, she said the way that they teach little kids is way different than what we're doing now. Like you don't say pretend there's a bad guy, you pretend there's a hungry lion that's escaped the zoo or aliens have landed on a roof. She said the, the outcome's going to be the same, they're going to come up with the same answers as if you told them there was a bad guy, but it's a completely different scenario and it's play-based. And apparently the psychology behind that is if you do it through play, it comes back to you. So it was very, very interesting, she was very cool. I think we should bring her in as a speaker somewhere because she was fantastic and very animated, but very introverted, it was a weird combination. The other one, I sat through a bunch on like the First Amendment and that was all, a lot of legal at eight o'clock in the morning. Then was another legal one at eight o'clock in the morning about like curriculum and materials. And we're basically doing everything we should be doing is what I got from that. We did the Educator Impact, which was awesome. The other one that I felt really, really interesting is I sat through one on Reinventing Your Family and Consumer Spaces, like it's not home ec anymore, but I'm still going to call it that. It turned out to be like half a sales pitch, but half was pretty cool. I didn't know you could get dual credits for doing like a foods class. This school, now I have to look it up because now I forgot the name of which school it was. Um, Anar, A-N-E-R-Y? Yeah. They get their own coffee and roast it and they sell it in their cafe. They have a culinary foods academy and so kids like sign up to be in this academy and then they do a pizza fundraiser where they make the pizzas and it's like a take-it-back situation. They do desserts for different events and like they get hired out to do this stuff and it's all a fundraiser, so they're basically self-sufficient. So that was really cool. And not that, I mean, but he started out with, you know, it's hard to get kids to take these classes. And I was like, oh, yeah, like a waitlist, I think I'm in the wrong class. We just had, we just, yeah, there was over 400 and they sell like two hundred. So, so we don't have that problem, but we, I mean, there's opportunities. If we can do dual credit with some of these classes, even though it's already hard for kids to get in, that's still an awesome, an awesome thing to look into, so. Yeah. Thank you. Joel, do you have anything you would like to share?
Sure. I did a fair amount of school finance though. I learned through all of that, other than some of the stats that Jim already mentioned, is that Araryon Scott DeYoung does a pretty damn good job educating us on how that stuff works. So kudos to you when I can sit in one of those meetings and be bored, if that helps. I learned a little bit already, so appreciate that. Of course, the Elbro presentation on creating a culture of gratitude or a culture of appreciation was fantastic, lots of really good ideas. The other thing I sat through, and I think a couple others did too, was around succession planning and thinking about, a lot of succession planning in education is done reactively and maybe as a board being much more proactive about that. Thinking about how we would set ourselves up for future success. Not that we're trying to replace anybody for any of that stuff, but I just, you know, thinking through some of the things that we might want to start doing and building out an actual succession plan like you would for a business, more like you would for, for anything else when we start to look at, well, if we were faced with this in the next three years, five years, 10 years, what would we be trying to do, what would we be looking for as a board? Writing it down, having documents so that as the board changes, which it does every single year, we've got some common thread in terms of some of that stuff. That's why I wanted to go with that.
Awesome, thank you, Joel. Brian, you were able to join us, do you have anything you would like to share?
I would say, you know, the, the biggest thing for me, I attended a lot of law sessions and what's coming up, learned about the proposal legislation that's coming through Title IX. I knew it's been coming for a long time and we finally think it's going to get, it gets passed. Aaron and I do a lot of Title IX stuff for the district. And so we were thinking that it was going to be a little bit tighter, but it turns out it's going to be a lot looser. And so that has us a little bit nervous on how that's going to play out and what that means for Title IX investigations within the district. I would also say for, for me, the collaboration was great, as well as just kind of feeling a little bit inspired. You know, when the keynotes were all great, the bands and the orchestra, the, there were so many talented students who were doing some amazing pieces. And then also John Canionnes, you know, the What Would You, What Would You Do? His, just his whole speech about, just kind of the whole purpose of like, what do you do when you face inequities in education? And what do you do when you face inequities on the street? And in all of those areas and kind of connecting it back to the work that we're doing and trying to do the right thing for, for kids and families and staff. And how does that play out? So it was, it was, it was great.
Scott, you also joined us, do you have anything you want to share?
Well, I took Joel and Jim's lead and went to finance sessions. So my professional organization did a couple of presentations. The School Administrators Alliance did a presentation as well, just on current legislation, or I should say proposals and then what could come of the 25, 27 school years coming up, which is pretty difficult to think about right now, but that I will know. It's always interesting to me in any topic, right? Pick the topic, including school finance, where there are times that, because I see emails and I get information every day, it may not be a new item that I'm hearing about, but the way in which people discuss it, address it, present it, sometimes I almost feel like, I'm like a principal watching a teacher just from the standpoint of trying to, maybe not going in on the subject necessarily, because that may be understandable, but the way in which they, they present and engage the audience, I find that interesting. And maybe it's just a little bit of my experience teaching a hundred years ago. But thank you for giving me an opportunity to go, I, I get a lot out of that every year, so thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, I went to, all the sessions I went to were really great. Brian and I attended a session on student mental health, which was led by three previous Teacher of the Year. And they were, there were three different districts, they're amazing. The ideas they shared, how they used the data that they collected related to student mental health, the tools that they used, I took lots of notes that we discussed and saw. The student engagement piece that Carly and I both went to, it was all about how you can incorporate student feedback, but they did it in a professional learning session. And she was really incredibly thoughtful and purposeful about teaching students how to give feedback, teaching the, the staff how to receive feedback. They had only done this panel discussion once, so it was all about, this kind of described, positive interactions, like how did your help you feel belonged? And how did this or that? And then like the next one, it's not necessarily going to go negative, but it's going to be like, okay, like what's a place that we can now grow to? And like it, it was all so well-organized and structured. She talked about a few different books and TED Talks, the book I downloaded, and TED Talk I listened to, and it was really good. And another one that I'll say that I went to was about opportunities for energy improvements. And as we talk about possibilities for the ELC and the PC and just our facilities in general, when Dave Reed does such a fantastic job keeping us up to date, you know, if we want to consider doing sort of an energy audit to identify areas where we can improve and then we can also identify what grants are available, Audrey's already nodding. So yeah, I, I, all the sessions that I went through were really useful and being together was incredibly useful and I think really important. I think it makes us more cohesive and collaborative and we learn from each other. So anyways, I thought it was really great. Anything else anyone wants to say about that?
My mind just goes to all these great ideas and what can we, what can we do with it? How can we bring it into practice? If there's, I want to hold this to a quota of any number of things, but if there's at least some where we can document these and refer back to them.
I think where they are relevant to the committees that we already have, you know, like I'm, I'm just thinking the same thing, like what can we build into conversations that we have at committee level? But then when we have that session in May about goal setting, like what do we need to address there? Like I can't remember what it's all about, you know, just based on what we've been talking about. I think that, I don't know, that was my, I mean, we can create some sort of shared folder, can't really be truly interactive, but we can say things in there if that's a good idea.
I think we need to do something, some way to create a, every time we have more turnover, we're going to have organizational capital lost, we just are. And so we need to find a way to capture as much of that as we can. I don't think we've ever done that as a board in the past, but that needs to be probably a major initiative overboard so that we can keep some common threads as we move forward.
We just have to be careful we don't do anything to violate open meetings.
Of course.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's where, I don't know if this is a shared folder or if it's something as simple as we need to do a planning, meaning that that's where we do that particular work or something like that, I don't, but yes, I agree.
Yeah. Kathleen?
I agree.
No reply at all.
Don't do it.
Don't do it.
Ever, doesn't matter.
Really just go for your first old email.
All right, moving on. Seven A, second reading of our community letter regarding stewardship and upcoming capital needs. Carly?
So this, we talked a bit about this letter at the last meeting and then a group of us discussed it again when we were at the, when we were at the convention. You'll see the changes here, there was really just a lot cut out, a lot of the original focus on the operating referendum. And then if you, like, this was really hard to follow, you see, you asked how about Charles' change? So like just consider the entire big red line. But I guess from my perspective, like with, with the shift away from the focus on operational referendum, which I think had, you know, a lot of arguments and made sense, then I think this kind of turned into like a more of an invitation to the community event on the 21st. And so the idea behind it was kind of just structured to say like, you know, we, the district and community, we've done a lot of great things together over time. We've got a lot of success, here's a preview of kind of what's next on the horizon. So that's, that's what it is. I'm curious what feedback you guys have after looking at it. I've got a comment on the revision after looking at it again, but I just do hear from others.
Hi, we've been talking about this for so long. This is going to be a guest article, not a letter.
Yes, yes.
So my one thought is your support of the knockover various schools. Like if you, I mean, we've read this so many times, but I was like, we should at least take, you know, your support of, of who and what in that first sentence. And then my other thought, now that it is much shorter than it was, I know we say current building issues, you know, and this is, I don't know, can we, can we add to the list something that we've all talked about that Rachel hit on again last week? Is the, and I don't know exactly the best way to say it in terms of bullet, but you know, dated instructional spaces and inefficient use of personnel. You know, like hitting on those two things and I mean, I don't know, I feel like they could be lumped into one. But I think that that's going to be an important communication piece going forward. That, you know, like it's all these things and the inefficiencies of staff going back and forth and how that, you know, can constrain schedules and, you know, shifts services that we can provide, we can provide to students, you know what I mean? Like it's not a big deal and we don't talk about it here. So I didn't know if we could just add one there. Those were my two thoughts. And I don't know if those pieces are in some of the other marketing that you're doing. So I mean, if it is, you could just, you know, obviously cabinet-based.
My additional comment to your point, like reading it over. I, I wonder if like the first sentence of this upper paragraph just needs some other transition because like the, the first paragraph, you do come back to like the more high level, we've done good things together, things are going well, and then boom, operational referendum reference, what that hasn't come in before. And so like jumping right to that feels a little awkward, especially we're not, we don't have any other follow-up on it. And so I wonder, I just wonder if that sentence just needs like, I don't, and unfortunately don't have a great proposal right off the top of my head, but I think it could be just a little smoother.
So what's our timeline on this?
I don't know, but I think it's maybe soon, isn't it? I mean, this first session and then a couple of weeks. We were hoping to get it out this week, but if that's not possible, we could always do it next week or and swap out my invite words. Yeah, I don't. What if we, maybe this is a better idea, what if we say instead of while the operational referendum has allowed this, what if we connect it back to that, your support? And we could say, and sort of just start that second paragraph the same way, your support has allowed the district to meet the day-to-day expenses of supporting our students, but we still have some capital, like just get rid of the reference to operational referendum. And just say, I think that your support of the district, or you know, yeah, your support of the district has allowed us to meet day-to-day expenses for the day to day supporting our stu-, whatever. And by yet, we have extensive capital investment needs. And then we don't even say operational referendum, which we can make that happy.
And then we don't even say operational referendum, which may make that happy. Adam, what do you think?
Yeah, I was trying to frame the question, do we need to approve this tonight? Because if we do, then...
The thing's on the 21st, so yeah. I mean, either, like, I think we either approve it or we just say that we'll use our space somewhere else some other time, is my thought. And we let operations materials go.
I wore, we're not at the very, very end. We just talked about 2017 successful capital referendum. It gets rolled down, just to do that. Sorry. Right at the very end. Which primarily focused, I, I just thought maybe had the security of our district buildings. So, as a thought, 2017 successful capital referendum, which primarily focused on the school of our district buildings and improvement to the high school. We need to put in the security.
Security.
Because it wasn't just the high school, the rest of the, it was down to the high school, the rest of the district. The way it's made, the general feedback made through the comments that both of you brought up, just the, the tone setting of the town, the transition, as you said there. And then, I think that your point is really important, because at least that's been my view on the ELC, is like, you can fix it up, you know, to a perfectly, and it doesn't operate well as a school.
Right.
For now. So it's not even, you know, a money issue, throwing money at it issue, it's just not an ideal education.
What's the best? Yeah. I would say, in scheme of communicating about this, like, this is going to go in the mail, and then your thing is going to go in the next week. Like, I like the idea that it's going to be in the paper many times to try and get people's attention. So I would like to fix whatever we want to fix and pass this. I, I don't want to scrap it.
He needs it, he needs it tonight, doesn't he?
What is the PLC? Because we're meeting at the PLC and I don't know what the PLC is.
Oh, fix that. Those are the easiest.
Okay. Because I thought we were meeting at the ELC and then I was like, oh, now I don't know. I have a silly one. Can you put my middle initial in my name?
That's how I write it all the time.
It's an M.
Just in terms of the actual process, do we approve a final letter in its final form? Or do we have some flexibility?
We can approve it with the suggested edits and let Audrey fix it.
And I would, would be approve this in final form and preliminary form.
With edits.
With edits discussed.
And, and those edits would be your support of the Mount Harbor area school district, and then your support of Mount Harbor area school district for the operation.
Nope. Nope, nope. Just get rid of, your, your support of the Mount Harbor area school district has allowed, or no, you, okay, don't say the support. Your support has allowed the district to meet the day-to-day expenses. Get rid of all the other stuff, just your support.
Got it.
Somebody else, why am I just sitting next to you?
That's the right, yeah. And then however, our kindergarten building.
Yep.
And then at the end, it will, will spell out Professional Learning Community Center at the high school.
Nope, it was be at the PC. She wrote.
Oh, it is the PC. It is the PC.
See, this is one. Midnight, I'm in a deep call, you guys are like, where, where am I going? Why am I at the high school? I don't know where I'm supposed to be. Just find me one.
And high school overall safety and security measures within the district.
Just an idea.
Yeah. And then Audrey's going to add a bullet related to instructional spaces and inefficient use of personnel.
Okay. And I second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Adam, seconded by Jim, to approve the community letter with the suggested revisions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. B, consider approval of the Board of Education Strategic Plan Breakthrough 2032. We have talked about this extensively. I don't know if anyone has anything they want to talk about. Ryan, you are here.
Yep.
For replacing our panel meeting. I don't know if you have any.
I just put, I put some of the finalized versions on each of your places, if you wanted to check those out. We've held a, I don't know if we've talked about it since the last time, but we held a community, we invited all of the staff to participate and give you feedback on that. Again, I think that's another example of quality, not quantity of participants in that. So we had some good feedback. We've incorporated some changes, so we're pretty close.
Absolutely.
We're close.
I like the revisions since, since last Wednesday. Thank you.
Anyone have any thoughts or questions or comments?
I love it. Beautiful. I don't, I don't have any questions. I just appreciate all the, I know this is a very long process, involved a lot of people, a lot of discussions by us over time, whether in committees or in this meeting or workshops. And so I just want to acknowledge that it was a lot of time and effort put in and a lot of feedback, a lot of some groups to get to where we are. And I think we've got some really exciting things in here in the future, looking forward to the expand, to the introduction of the IB program, to the expansion of our apprenticeship programs as much as we can, and some of the things on here that we're already doing, that we gotta keep on doing and do better. So thanks to everyone for all the input.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jim, to approve the Board of Education Strategic Plan Breakthrough 2032. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven C, first reading, consider revisions to Board Policy Number 850, Public Solicitation Promotions on School Premises. Audrey.
Thank you. So as part of one of the board's focuses, I've been tasked with setting up a process for enabling businesses to advertise on our events, as well as for taking sponsorships. I've worked super hard alongside our staff, as well as other school districts, to create a guide that breaks down set opportunities. I don't have it with me tonight because I didn't want to share it today, that'll be for another night. But it includes set opportunities, relevant policies, as well as agreements and forms, which are all pertinent to the process. So we'll get into the nitty-gritty of that guide at a future meeting. First, we need to adapt policies, including 850, so public solicitations and promotions on school premises, to allow the district to offer opportunities efficiencies. So, there's this policy, as well as 851, which is sponsorship and advertising in schools. That's still being caled and still being workshopped, so we're gonna use the easy one first. I say easy relatively. So, without further ado, as referred by the community, or, sorry, Community and Legislative Engagement Committee, the changes include, so first and foremost, in the title, we've added sales. So it's not only public solicitations and promotions, it's also sales on school premises. There was also a minor grammar edit. Thank you, Joel. It'll be could instead of would. So cases where approval could be appropriate include, let's see, and then, instead of the board or just the superintendent, so what you can see in paragraph three and six, it was either the Board of Education or in that later paragraph, just the superintendent. So we made sure that all of those are analogous and included a little bit of wiggle room. So that turned into Board of Education and/or the superintendent or their designee, just to allow for flexibility on who could approve. And obviously, there's cross references to like, let's say, 840, Policy 840, which is public gifts to schools, which determines based on how much we're receiving, that's who approves. Any questions so far?
Thank you, Audrey. We can't obviously approve it this evening because Ryan is not here, but if anyone has any questions or comments, anything they want to discuss.
Just a quick comment regarding our WASB convention. The guide that Audrey's talking about is some great work that has come out of the past conventions. So there is good things that have come on, but I know Leah and I attended New Orleans' presentation last year that discussed this, this guide. So just another reference to the good work at the convention.
And this is a year in the works. Which is pretty quick in the grand scheme of like, I mean, our convention, we saw this book and now we have a secret book that we will see shortly.
I guess I have one question. So, but like, the last sentence says, whenever school district personnel do approve the distribution materials that solicit student involvement, do we need to solicit, say solicit, if they get, that should be whenever distribution materials is approved, it should be the least intrusive possible manner?
Good point.
I mean, yes, certainly for student involvement, but I think any of that should be, we should be held to that standard.
Any other comments, questions?
Athletes' middle initial. We're a production.
Thank you, Audrey. We'll have to see this again at our next meeting.
First reading, consider revisions to Board Policy 523.12, Return to Work.
So we had some revisions through the Personnel Committee, and this one has quite a minutes, but though it's really a lot of format, so I'll go through some of those. Throughout the document, there's a section on required communication, and it's in every paragraph. Rather than be stating it three times, we just took that required communication and brought it to the top, so it proceeds all of the sections. There was a removal of the eligibility section, as it really was redundant and not needed. It defines who is applied to that is being required. There was also a section added towards the end on non-restricted return from workers' compensation. So if someone is out, but there is no transitional work needed, that section was added. And finally, in the very last paragraph, a section added on absence from work exceeding three consecutive days, under the heading, non-FMLA incidents occurring offsite. I know this is a, refers to a lot of the family medical impact is referenced in here as well, that proceeds, and these suggestions as well. But can I answer any questions or hear any suggestions? And this is my first reading.
You ready? No? All right. Erin, do you want to move on to 526?
Yes. 526, Employee Personnel Records. Some minor changes that I will go through. On the third paragraph, there's a section, the very last sentence, employees are responsible for any costs associated with, really the state statute 10313, records open to employees, it was, is what applies here, rather than public records, because these are employee files. So we can charge for copying costs, the copying costs out of administration, so that is adjusted. The line separate files should be maintained for medical and disability records, and will be treated as confidential. Throughout the document, you'll see his or her to bear designee throughout the document. Another specific to note, when it talks about access to an employee's personnel file can be granted to following persons without the consent of the employee. There are three additions here. The school board as a full governmental body, individual members are listed below, that has not changed, as directed by the board or the superintendent to district legal council. And then three, any, again, the board or the superintendent could designate any lawful, lawfully appropriate to any other agent of the district or federal, state, local, public officials. So those three things were added. Any questions on employee personnel records?
Do we need any kind of definition of confidential? I mean, for the most part, personnel records would be considered confidential period, but when you make a statement that the medical and disability repile-related records would be kept separate and treated as confidential?
Yes. The, the medical and disability records are, would now be, we're keeping them separate from employee personnel records, as they wouldn't necessarily be part of any kind of performance review or such.
Right. So I'm guessing, you know, I guess the issue there is, this is all confidential. So I don't know that that's the appropriate word then.
Got it.
They just, just, we need to note that they need to be kept separate. Otherwise, we're, well, what's confidential, what's not?
Or it maybe sounds as if not the rest of the...
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Number eight, citizens' comments. Number nine, future agenda items. If there's anything that you would like to discuss, please let me or Dr. Slomo know. Number 10, schedule of next meetings.
Yeah. There's two personnel meetings coming up, on February 8th and February 15th. It can be at district office or virtual. Finance is on February 12th, virtual. And then February 19th, we have SAW, and then our next Board of Education meeting, right here.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? It's all moved. Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel. All those in favor of your name, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are. Did, I didn't know it was a ten. I was like, wait, somebody has...
Don't lie there for a minute.
Thank you. Audrey, if you have some of your letters.